Okay, so following me in order.
I pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, give them, roll call, please.
President Dowd.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Secretary Zimmerman.
President.
Secretary Wazour.
Here.
Trustee Lady.
Your.
Trustee Derrick.
Here.
And Trustee Bell.
Here.
Hey, thank you. We go with the conservation ethic, please.
Yep, I'll read that. Conservation ethic goal six. To foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens. Helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues than act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. The goal is number four, to interpret and promote the overall significance of natural and cultural resources and to promote public understanding and support of district land management practices.
Hey, great, thank you. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. The quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, that strongly count them, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number five, we work vigilantly to influence the health and well-being of our county.
Read the land, that acknowledgement statement. To many indigenous groups and tribal nations, including Ochum, Sipapu, Sodas, Toda, Moskotan, Miami, Peoria, Odalotami, Stock, Aslaki, and McHenry County is part of their traditional home. We invite you to join us in offering respect to the indigenous peoples living here today and their ancestors, stewardship of the land. Together, we celebrate these special places, seek to learn and honor the history of those who came before us, strive to forge meaningful relationships with indigenous communities to deepen our collective connection to the land.
Thank you. Okay, uh, seven point oh. We, uh, I'll make the motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the just, uh.
Second. But it's one and second.
Who is second?
Uh, Mike.
Okay.
And Rudy second, go ahead with the roll call, please.
Trustee Lady.
Yeah.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Derrick.
Yes.
Secretary Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Secretary Wazour.
Yes.
President Dowd.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to eight point oh. Uh, special recognition and presentations. Uh, we'll do a team member introduction.
Uh, before we do that, I do just have a flash here, just to put up a special presentation uh, just to say congratulations and to thank our voters here in McHenry County, the district's proposition that county clerk has posted, and we have been successful in the passage of the proposition, fifty point two eight percent, uh, so a difference of eight hundred and fifty-seven votes. So, congratulations. Water protected, our wildlife, and access. So, thank you, thank you to board, to staff, uh, to our volunteers, and to our vote yes committee that was a collaboration, a coalition of individuals and many partners that aligned together to help. So, thank you.
Thank you for the tireless efforts, too. And, yeah, seriously. Great. Now, move on to the, uh, introduction of team members.
I'm here to be on.
John, are you on?
I am, yeah, good evening, yeah, John Peters, I serve as the district's restoration ecology manager. I'd like to introduce Philip Nagorny. Uh, Philip is our new hire as the restoration ecologist in our land preservation natural resources division. Uh, Philip's position is being funded, uh, by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service through the Hackt National Wildlife Refuge Recreation Partnership Grant. Uh, Philip is a graduate of Northern Illinois University. He's got extensive experience fighting wildfires with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as he served as a forestry technician. He was a fire assistant, fire engine captain on a wildland firefighting crew stationed in the state of Washington. Uh, Philip also has experience working at the, the nature conservancies, uh, Natchoochee Grasslands as a land steward. He brings his knowledge and experience to our team. So, welcome, Phil, uh, can you say hello for us real quick?
Yep, thanks, John. I'm really happy to be here and thank you for the opportunity and looking forward to working alongside everyone and with our partners. So, should be great.
Excellent, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Great, thank you, John. Okay, now we'll go back to other good news, best of the best award. Want to talk about that?
Well, for those that were present, uh, during the evening, so Lloyd and Bonnie, why don't you talk about the?
Wow, it was fun. It's a long, long drive in a fancy place, but it was a very nice event. Um, I must say a thousand people, and this is a huge room, and it was packed with people. Um, formal, I mean, there were a lot of tuxedos and, and, uh, Bonnie had a, uh, she looked like Cinderella in this, this, tiny dress. But we had a whole good time, and it was nice to get to meet the bison folks. Uh, that big tall guy that's standing next to me, he's like six-six, but, uh, very nice, uh, gentleman, he and his wife are there, and, uh, very nice, nice event.
Eddie Rutter and, uh, and Adam Rex, and Caitlin was there, and Brenna, and Adam and, and Brenna are very much involved, that puts on the ground with the event and many of the take part, but it was, it was wonderful to, uh, celebrate the work that's there, and Gabe, you were sharing today, obviously, the vision, so why don't you give that, that tidbit, because I thought that was impactful.
Yeah, so while fifteen years ago, we started the grant, joint grassland venture, we were trying to get bob links, uh, which is a listed species to, to breed on our landscape, so, so we started realizing they were just using the agricultural grounds, so we started the grassland venture to try and create the structure, because they were kind of ignoring our restorations. And we kept saying, we grazing, we grazing, that's how these species evolved, was the habitats that were provided, and we knew that we wanted to get there at some point. So, it was fifteen years later after that program, we finally had the bison, and numbers are off the charts for that species in particular. So, it really shows the importance of having those structural components, but really, the different aspects of nature that create those different environments are important on the landscape, that, that we can't just do ourselves through mechanical grazing or agriculture.
Yeah, you know, when you, the grazing cattle don't really bring it as the bison that actually.
Yeah, it's just something about that structure and the way that they graze and how they graze, and the organic matter that they leave and how they leave behind just creates that, that perfect structure, that that species in particular needs.
Good. You can ask that question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, are they migratory, so they have to actually pass over this area and then recognize it? It's not like, and that's how they find out about it?
Really cool success story.
That is a great answer. Hopefully, there'll be more to come. Uh, did you have to hit any more to add for the, uh, best of the best award?
Well, there were two very awake people, and the rest of us were getting pretty tired. Drive all the way back from willing to home, so it was, boy. And it was, they were just alive, alive.
Well, Lishman worked a room, so she, she had everybody there watching you.
That's her forte.
Okay, uh, moving to the partnership award with the Ruters, uh, in more need to be said.
Just grateful for the partnership.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
That's great. Okay, we'd like to recognize, uh, employees' service. Uh, we have several anniversaries here and, uh, we would like to.
I can go through this for us, so, uh, we do recognize and thank, uh, our employees uh, that are celebrating service anniversaries this year. This district has an amazing retention rate of team members and, and working to elevate them and grow them as professionals, and we're just so grateful. Uh, but I want to just give a shout out here, uh, for five years, uh, Ryan Bukowski with our police department, Jay Irvin, um, with our operations, Ree Galprinson with education, Estee Lamottania. Uh, for ten years, Kyle Ames with our operations team, Paul Bruitt with our land preservation natural resources, Jane Gerdspring in accounting, and then Chris Morrison also with our law enforcement and operations. So, they're celebrating ten years.
Excellent.
For fifteen years, Officer Charlie Montgomery, and, uh, so we recognize her. Uh, for twenty years with us this evening, we have Andy Diallo. Um, Danny Hyder, Kate Towers, Sandy Rogers, Tom Simpson, and Dave Beck.
It's a good year.
Almost all the largest classes.
Right?
That's great.
And then for twenty-five years, uh, Jeff Murray in our land preservation natural resources, and Ben O'Day in our operations team. Congratulations to all of them, thank them.
Great, thank you. All right, move into trustees' report, um.
I think we have. Yes, yeah. Um, I, since I was, uh, remote last week, I wanted to just make a couple comments that I didn't get to, so didn't know how well you could be heard, but wanted to congratulate the marketing team, just find your wild again, it was just amazing, I just, after reading the report, eleven thousand nine hundred submitted photos. That just blew my mind, that's.
Yeah, that's huge.
That's huge, that many people love the spaces and want to share it back, right, to all of us, and I, I just, I just couldn't believe that, so.
And we finally found out through our vote.
Yes.
The way it was.
Right, yeah, I mean, I was thinking about that on the way in, about the vote and all that, and I'm like, I was thinking about that number of pictures, that means people that care, you know, so, that was great. Um, other thing is I wanted to congratulate Amy Peters for getting accepted to the director's school. Um, right, that was in.
She applied.
She applied?
Fortunately.
No?
Not get in, but she.
Okay, all right.
On the chair.
We'll try again. Yeah, we'll try again and get her in, okay. Um, last was, uh, you know, I live, uh, right on the prairie trail, and, uh, so I get to see the, the rework that's getting done, and it just looks, looks amazing. I, I didn't expect, I expected, I would say repath, but not so much improvement as, especially at the crossings, at the street crossings, the improvements just amazing. So much thought and work has gone into, you know, even, even, uh, they, they put those pads in, so when you come up and stop, you don't slide, right, that kind of thing, so. So, just want to thank the team for going above and beyond on that, so, that's all I have.
Good, good. And we're, uh, pretty much finished with those projects, I think, they're getting done, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, uh, both, uh, the trail projects are nearly complete. Um, unfluss tires are left signage going in, you know, those kinds of things, the last, last things you do. Um, and, uh, so, yeah, that, we've had tremendous weather for doing construction this fall, that rain that we had the last couple of days, kind of, you know, slowed things down a little bit, but, um, yeah, it's nearly done.
Excellent. Okay.
Green drink report? Uh, yeah. It was interesting, the, the topic was the bio reactor that's on our, on district property, how, you know, the water runs through it, it's on, it's, it's two drain tiles come into it, and there's wood chips, they've experimented with different sized wood chips, they found the right size and all that, and, and they measure daily, you know, the nitrates in the water are coming in, and then the nitrates going out, it finds out that it removed a lot of the nitrogen from the water, which helps, uh, the Midwest farmers are really getting nailed by Louisiana in particular because of the algae blooms in, in the Gulf, which is created by all the nitrogen that Midwest farmers are, are.
And phosphorus.
Yeah, and phosphorus. So, anyway, they went on and on about this reactor, and, uh, but it seemed like it was under the, you know, barely spoken that it's on district property, and we're participating in helping to get the samples and, and I think are even analyzing the samples, so we're doing a lot about it, or, or in a lot of involvement, so.
It's been going on for quite some time, that's probably why.
Okay, but, but now they're, they're to the point where they feel that this is the model that can be reproduced, that these are the dimensions and everything, that it can be replicated, and, um, for the write-up paper then, that this can be something that can replicate in patients.
We partnered with the other groups that do that, we tried to get it. Or, or, but, what, what?
I think it's important to note that, uh, all the collection's done by volunteers, the district's volunteers, they have all that.
Now, are they still collecting? I thought they sort of stopped that.
Well, yeah, during the, whenever they stop.
Okay.
During the.
But they haven't.
Yeah.
Right, I guess the point that we're trying to subtly make was the district didn't seem to me to get nearly as much recognition as, as we deserved.
There have been other write-ups in the past years, that, yeah, it's, yeah. How long ago was that put in?
Twenty-twenty, this, that was this COVID, yeah.
Okay.
We had to do a remote, like.
Yeah.
It was the president of Farm Year Old.
I thought it was earlier than that, because I was out there. I don't remember COVID. I would think more COVID.
Twenty-nineteen to twenty-one.
We had a tent out there.
It was the president of Farm Year Old, so it's all the game, though, recently.
Right, right. So, good. Uh, McHenry County Economic, uh, what is it?
Economic Corporation.
Yeah, we went to the, uh, dinner, annual dinner meeting awards, so those were Todd and I, and. Our family. It's a hundred and six hundred.
Yeah. Group has been together for quite a while. It's, uh, I happen to know personally a lot of those people, they're very, very connected, uh, actually. She and John came, why not?
Glad, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I go through the plan. And I mentioned to John this with that we'd like to meet him hopefully there, but he is on his way traveling, I don't know if they got canceled or not, but he said maybe we could get together, just at the office, Wednesday, Monday, yeah. Um, just very, very good to, to know. And then Chris, who was the other individual we met, like, we took a picture, her name from the Kiri. It's the Kiri.
Oh, Karen, oh, she was from the, uh, Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce.
Kiri Rowe, so it's Kiri and Karen Rowe. Um, yeah, she was the head of this, uh, Chamber.
Yeah, so we were gonna reach out, but, uh, there were four strategic pillars, I don't recall, and it wasn't official that they were looking at, but there may be a funding opportunity, so.
Right, and I mentioned for her to get a hold of, uh, Foundation.
The Foundation, right.
Yeah. That's, uh, on, too.
Yeah, and then Hampton, it was a lot of fun, I thought.
And Hampton.
Yeah, better than I thought, and if anyone's curious, if Everflus gets fired, somebody asked him who he hired, he said Dean Camp, closest link to Mike that he's ever seen.
I won't tell. I feel the people are doing that. All right. Along, uh, sadness, I'd like to have John do his last report.
Thank you, everyone.
Last meeting, but you're welcome to tell me any other.
Because of the election, there's not a lot of businesses in the county, except that we're voting for our annual budget tonight. I'll make sure to let them know that you guys have passed. And, um, it has been a pleasure serving with all of you, and we'll pass meet again.
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks for your commitment.
Uh, we'll go on to public comments, anybody out there of public comment?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Okay, thank you.
I did see Kevin, I don't know if he's still there, I don't know if he had a public comment or not, but.
Sir, can you guys, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, Kevin Ivors. Greenwood, Illinois, just, uh, I just wanted to say a word of, of gratitude and thanks for the leadership, uh, with the board and staff of the Conservation District. And, uh, and thank you for your dedication and all that each and every one of you do. And that's it.
Well, thank you, and, and, and we hit you back on that. You guys do a great job at the foundation, we appreciate that. So, thank you for all your efforts. Okay. Um. We'll move on to thirteen point oh, the consent agenda.
Ready? Yep, I'm ready. Uh, thirteen point oh, board business consent agenda. Um, Secretary Wazour, do I get to say moves? Thirteen point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings. Thirteen point one A, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Committee of the Hall Executive Session. Thirteen point one B, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, Committee of the Hall. Thirteen point one C, October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, Regular Meeting. Thirteen point two A, Acceptance of Treasurer's Report for October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, Gas Percentage. Thirteen point three, Resolution Number twenty-four dash eighty-five, Appointing Treasurer Zimmerman as the district's official delegate. Truck, uh, trustee Zeller's first alternative. Uh, Vice President Everard is second alternative, Executive Director Elizabeth S. Kessler's third alternative for the IAPD Annual Business Meeting on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Thirteen point four, Resolution Number twenty-four dash eighty-six, Amending Job Descriptions, Job Titles, Reporting Structures, and FSLA Classification Status to the following full-time positions. Police Administrative Coordinator, Grade Four. Agricultural Ecologist, Grade Six, to Working Lands Ecologist, Grade Seven. GIS Analyst, Grade Six, to Systems Analyst, Grade Six. Marketing Coordinator, Grade Four, to Marketing and Design Coordinator, Grade Four. Marketing Manager, Grade Eight. Conservation Ecology Manager, Grade Nine, and Restoration Ecology Manager, Grade Nine Effective tw- uh, November twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. Thirteen point five, First Reading. Uh, Amendments to Personal Policy and Procedural Me- Um, Manual. Thirteen point six, Resolution Number twenty-four dash eighty-seven, Authorizing the Executive Director to Enter an Agreement with the McHenry County Sheriff's Office for Membership into the McHenry County Regional Training Center, MRTC, for Calendar Year two thousand twenty-five for an amount not to exceed four thousand four hundred dollars. Thirteen point seven, Resolution Number twenty-four dash eighty-eight, Author, authorizing the Executive Director to Execute Site Use Agreements with the McHenry County Snowmobile Association, the Huntley Penguins, and the Merango, that's snowgoers. Thirteen point eight, Resolution twenty-four dash eighty-nine, Authorizing the Executive Director to Execute a Grant Agreement with the L.R. Department of Transportation for State Planning and Research Fund for two hundred forty thousand. Two, uh, Public Safety Kramer Planning, uh, uh, planning costs, planning covering the cost of the prairie trail wayfinding signage planning project. Thirteen point nine, Resolution Number twenty-four dash ninety, Authorizing the Executive Director to Prepare and Submit a Letter of Support for the Chicago Wilderness Alliance Community Wildfire Preparedness Plan. Thirteen point one oh, Resolution Number twenty-four ninety-one, We're Grantifying the Executive Director's Execution of Change Order Number One in the amount of three thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars with Schroeder Asphalt Incorporated of Huntley to adjust their project scope to adjust the unanticipated covelet needing replacement found during the prairie trail link resurfacing project bid number oh-four-two-four point oh-nine point oh-one.
Yeah. We made it.
Thanks, Thomas Ray.
Hey, it's been moved, second, and we need a second, Lloyd seconded.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Wazour.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Lady.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Derrick.
Yes.
And President Dowd.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're on to fourteen point oh, other business, treasurer?
Yep, fourteen one A, Treasurer's Internal Audit. Uh, we received back September's, uh, internal audit, have no further questions or comments on that. Did select three from October. Um, uh, governmentjobs.com, um, so I get, uh, invoice number four-four-six-six-one for thirty-four twenty-three oh-six, and a second charge for fifty-seven oh-five-eleven for a total of ninety-one twenty-eight seventeen. Uh, another invoice for the number one-two-three-two-one-nine, uh, chimney tuck coin for eighty-nine hundred dollars. Uh, and last one is, uh, so, dust and wire marsh metal rental for fifty-seven hundred dollars. All, all three of these I selected just to, uh, just to ensure the district following policies and procedures with, um, uh, you know, sign-off procedures for amounts above threshold for each employee, so, um, otherwise everything else. Now, fourteen point one B, uh, I make a, make a motion, uh, to approve bills payable as indicated on submission of bills pending report for month ending October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, to see the second.
Second.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Derrick.
Yes.
Secretary Wazour.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Lady.
Yes.
President Dowd.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Treasurer. Pretty much executive report through the design, you have anything else you want to respond?
No, I just, thank you, thank you, have a happy Thanksgiving, and, um, any board member that wants to help, I'll be doing a lot of written thank you letters, so. But that would be, again, but just, again, relishing this, and, uh, more information will be coming out later, um, we are looking to be all together, just, uh, like we did last year on the holidays, so on the twelfth, after the board meeting, so mark the calendars, we'll get together on the Committee of the Hall, we may meet.
Um, on Saturday, they held the call thing, the foundation did for calling. Kevin, are you still out there?
I am.
How did that go with the, the call, and thank you, did you have enough volunteers and everything work out okay?
We really appreciate, um, the group we had together, so, so, so thank you so much, and, and it was a great experience, you know, it was not a, a call you could tell that people were used to getting just to say thank you, um, and, uh, you know, we spent each probably about an hour and a half, you know, going through about forty or so calls, and, you know, you had those opportunities to leave a voicemail, um, but the, the people that we spoke with were grateful, I, I can recall the last conversation that I had just being, you know, really outstanding, it was a perfect way to cap, cap, cap the experience, so it was, this was a first for us to, to try this, and, uh, we think it was a, you know, a great way to personally, you know, connect with, uh, some of the folks that, uh, that support us, so, so, so thanks for the opportunity to update you.
Great, thank you. Also, uh, hike with Mike?
Hike with Mike was wonderful, uh, we were at Harrison Bendel Saturday morning, we had a great hike, and, uh, new participants this time, well, we actually had one returning, uh, always very informative. Rachel ran from education, and the, the hike for us, and always appreciative. We are planning our schedule, I would like to do it again, starting in the spring, and so we will continue that, uh, and that's been a great once-a-month program to get out.
That's, that's good. Excellent, all right. Excellent, all right, any public comments?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Well, someone asked me to maybe get this meeting done earlier, so. Can, or should I stall? Entertained the motion to adjourn? Even?
So.
Yeah, Mike, do that, second.
Hey.
The move in second then?
Trustee Lady.
Yes.
Trustee Derek.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Deller, yes, Secretary Wazar.
Yes.
President Damm.
Yes, motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, McHenry County.